How are you?
Good, how are you doing? Congratulations on the new grant.
Thank you.
I'm well, finally.
Special joint meetings between the city council and the charter review commission in a public workshop about these seventeen different propositions that have come out of the charter review for our charter amendments. So this meeting is for discussion only, there's not going to be any votes. It's to hear opinions, both of the charter review committee and council, in order to direct how the, on the February fifth meeting, what's right for amendment of the charter review of the charter. So members of the public are also invited to come and speak. The charter review and the council can speak as much as they want. The public will need to come up and be constrained by the three minutes, any public that wants to come in and speak. But how we were gonna do this, there's seventeen different propositions, A through Q. If I added them right, A through Q, and so we will go proposition by proposition and hopefully can get through. If we are not, we have put on the city council meeting continuation of this on the agenda.
For the council.
Council only, okay? For council only. So. Oh, so I'd like to call to order the special city council meeting and charter review. Time is now five oh one. Board chair?
Yes, I called to order the special joint charter review commission and city council board.
Thank you, you want me to hit the hammer?
Sure.
All right. At this time is public comments and receipt of petitions. Is there anyone can speak on any matter other than personnel matters or matters under litigation for a length of time not to exceed three minutes? No council board discussion or action may take place on a matter until such matters are placed on the agenda and posted in accordance of the law. Now, does that mean the public has to speak now on the seventeen, or can they speak as each proposition comes up?
That's up to you, mayor.
Okay, then probably easier to speak as each proposition comes up, the general public, under three minutes. But at this time, do we have anything that, anyone who'd like to come and speak?
Do you have anyone signed up? Do you have someone signed up, William Sumner?
Okay.
Bill Sumner, one, two, three, two, one, Zion Road, Tomball, Texas, seven, seven, three, seven, five. I'm here in, speaking in favor of term limits. I think we need to make sure that we get new ideas. I've been on the EDC board for twelve years. I think twelve, might even be fifteen, this, I'm appointed though not elected. This will be my last term, I've, I think they need new blood, I think they need new ideas, looking out of the box more, and so I'm in favor of term limits, and I wanted to put that on record. And the, the thing that I hear most people that want term limits is that we need time to learn the system. So if you're telling me we need six years or nine years to learn the system, we got a real problem. Because you should know the system before you become a councilman, a mayor, or an elected official. The other one is, you can vote us out of office, and that's term limits. Well, really doesn't work that way, I went back and looked. Between eighty-five to a hundred percent of incumbents get reelected in the United States. So that's not really a valid point that you can, you can throw us out. It's, it doesn't happen that way, the incumbent's name is out there and people just vote it when it's on there because they've seen your name before. So I just wanted to put my two cents worth in and say, you know, we, we've got a hundred and twenty-two million dollars, is my understanding of infrastructure, that maybe needs to be done immediately. Maybe if we had term limits, we wouldn't be in that position, I'm not sure. All I know is, we've kicked the can down the road and we've got a lot of problems. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone on Zoom wishing to speak in the three minutes? Okay. Is there anyone who has not signed up who would like to come up and speak about anything? Right. So hearing none, we will close the public comments and receipt of petitions. New business, Tomball City Council and Charter Review Commission will enter into a joint workshop regarding the recommendation amendments to the city of the Tomball Charter. So we will start that now. I'm assuming everybody has their charter and their charter amendments. Anyone need a? So first of all, I want to thank the charter review. The home rule, you know, this is our Magna Carta document. This is the home rule municipal government provided for the future progress of our city. And I want to thank you for your service, I know it's been eight months, how many, six months?
Let's start September.
September. Okay. That you have met and go over this, and I want to thank you all for your service for doing that. We appreciate you volunteering your time. We know time is something that we only have so much of, and we appreciate you choosing to serve the city in this way, thank you. Thank you very much. So the first one that we're going to is Proposition A, and please, Lauren, jump in. Thank you. Yeah, that mean you're gonna weigh your feet? But thank you for leading that. Proposition A, and the purpose of this is to have free dialogue. Dialogue of respectfulness also, we, we are all diversified, we are, all have different opinions, and we want free dialogue without any judgment, to be able to feel free to speak on any, on any item. The first one is Proposition A. Proposition A is what I call indirectly the Doris proposition. She had kept track of all these things for many years, and, and then when I came into offices, said, Doris, is there something that needs to be done? She said, please, fix the charter, we have several things that need to be corrected on it in order to make us more into compliance with state law. So Proposition A is to correct the substantial issues such as misspellings, grammatical errors, clarity. Not, oh.
Non-substitute.
None, okay, that word, non-substitute issues. Misspellings, grammatical errors, adding clarity, removing redundancies of language.
Go to page sixty-two of the PDF data.
Yes. And it starts with section three oh seven and two oh three.
My, let me just point out that what is gonna go on the ballot, and should this be approved by city council in the, in the election order, is everything under Proposition A that is either in italics or bold and ends in the yes or no to vote. Everything after that is simply the, the ordinance language that's being ordered by the city council that if it passes, then here's what the actual language is being changed verbatim. So what's going on the ballot is down through the, the vote yes or no on each one of these propositions.
Right, but there can be changes inside the propositions too. So, so Proposition A is, if y'all have gone through that, on account of changing will in section four oh one, section five oh seven was an outdated reference to the Texan, Texas election code. Section six oh three was add and to fix a grammatical error. Section six twelve was change council members to members of the council to provide clarity. Six thirteen changed council members to members of the council to provide clarity. Section seven oh seven changed an attorney to legal counsel to provide clarity. Section seven oh eight changed city judge to judge of the municipal court to provide clarity. Nine oh three is change in I N S U R E to E N S U R E to correct a typographical error. Section ten oh two was remove an outdated reference to Article nine seventy-eight. Section four VATS, Municipal Annexation Act. And. And then there is the detail, is exactly where these things are going to be changed in the different section following. And that continued on to page sixty-eight. So is there any discussion on those? Does there anyone have any changes or discussions or clarification on that Proposition A?
Yes. So all the things that you just listed, do those all have been published, just like you said them?
Just, what's gonna be published is the, the italics and the bold down through the vote yes or no. After that does not get published.
Is it?
But of course, it can be reviewed at the city secretary's office. For Proposition A, it will be taken sixty-two down through the first line of sixty-three.
And that's what's gonna be published, the detail of it goes to page sixty-eight.
And that's what would be up, down through the first line of page sixty-three is also gonna be on the ballot.
Do we know? I'm sorry.
I said if ordered.
Against.
Ordered.
So do we know the approximate cost on?
It'll be what it'll be, I mean, we've gotta make this public record.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just asking. Fifteen dollars or is it forty thousand or whatever?
The cost of publishing the propositions? Okay.
I'll get you an estimated. Definitely did look into.
So in your, in the propositions on page sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, and the top of sixty-eight, that is where each of those changes appear in each individual section. So once it is, this is voted on and approved, then those would be the changes to your document that you have, the charter. Any questions on any of that? And we can go back and forth, this is not so formal that we can't discuss something that we've prior discussion or past discussion. Okay? Proposition B. Proposition B is changing the masculine gender of the word used throughout this charter to always be interpreted to mean any gender, not any sex, that's section one oh five. And so that's Proposition B. Appears. To change, now, that's several places, we have that in the six hundreds and eight hundreds about changing genders.
Now, this one's just. This is just one.
This is section one point oh five, changing it to any gender and to, instead of either sex. So it's more politically correct under today's laws. Any gender, any discussion on that? Right? Proposition C, which is section two point oh three. Two point oh three, which is annexation. And the changes suggested on the annexation in section two point oh three is amending the article by removing the language inconsistent with recent changes to state law. Which is section two point oh three annexation. The council may by ordinance annex territory lying adjacent to the city in accordance with state law. So it's removing, the suggestion was to remove with or without the consent of the inhabitants in such territory are the owners thereof not inconsistent with the procedural rules prescribed by law applicable to the cities operating under the charter as adopted and amended. So has there been changes that? This says we don't need the consent of the inhabitants to annex territory, is that what's, what's this?
No, state law has been almost completely gutted in this area, that's the only way that you can, basically the only way that you can annex anymore is with the consent.
So Proposition C is bringing our charter in alignment with state law. Oh, any questions on that?
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, there we can hear you.
I, I do have a question, how does this affect our ability to have contiguous annexation, and i- if somebody comes and says they wanna be annexed, we go through all the stuff that we have to do to annex them, but there's a portion between where we are currently annexed or the city limits are, and the place that wants to be annexed, and we can't get permission to annex the other portion, how do we do contiguous annexation? We can't do it, right?
Correct, the property has to be contiguous to the city limits. In the, in RETJ, I don't know if that applies to Tomball, by transaction, but sometimes it could be, it could be adjacent to the city limits and in somebody else.
Didn't we have a portion that we actually annexed along the side of the roadway to be able to bring them into the city of Tomball proper?
Yes.
Can we do, not do that anymore?
No, you can, as long as the, as whoever owns the roadway will consent to you annexing the roadway.
So we would either, we would either, we would either have to have county or state approval?
Correct.
Wow.
And then at least text up pretty routinely gives that.
Okay.
All right, I can't promise it, just as soon as I say that, next time we ask, don't say no, so.
I thought I saw in here too that if eminent domain was in the greater good or something, or is that part of the changes later on in the six hundreds or eight hundreds?
Yeah, I don't, we're not gonna be able to do eminent domain in order to annex somebody.
Yeah, no, and well, unless you're, unless you're, unless you're acquiring the property for a public purpose, in which you could, and then annexed property, because then the city owns it, but that's not typical way that you go about annexation.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, okay.
Yeah, because I know there's been property who has done eminent domain in the municipality or the school district or the county has just sat on it for ten or fifteen years, isn't there a time limit that they have to do something once you take over a property by eminent domain?
Yes, there is, ten years.
Ten years. And what happens after ten years? Automatically?
Yes.
No, I don't think so. Think you're wrong about that, I said lady right there on the end of the table.
I don't think it's automatic, I think you have to go through a process, I mean, I'm not an attorney, but in my example, it's been nineteen years and it hasn't automatically come back.
No, it's fairly new law, the tenured reverter is, is within the last probably six years.
So it would affect you before that?
Correct.
Thank you.
That's good to know, that's good to know, though, thank you. Okay, any more discussions on Proposition C? It was two oh three, next is proposition, yes.
I, I can give you the answer for the cost, and so, so and granted, this is a very, very rough cost because they've changed our, our our contract on, on the publications first into column, but anyway, we're estimating, we don't believe it'd be over five thousand dollars. It's gonna probably be, probably within the fifteen to two thousand dollars. It's gotta be in four different languages so that it can escalate pretty quick, so I'd say on the very, very high end, probably under five.
Thanks.
Right. Proposition D, and that pertains to section five oh one. Section five oh one. But that talks about elections regular and special, but also in going through section three oh six, I wanted to address to make sure we understand that. Section three oh six, our official newspaper. Can we choose a newspaper that puts out electronic editions, or is it still in paper? And can we change that in our resolute, in our charter?
It, it, state law requires it to be a newspaper of general circulation in the, in the city.
Yeah, as official newspaper shall continue until another is designated and caused to be published therein. All ordinances, notices, and other matters required to be published by this charter. But I didn't see anything that's required to be published by paper newspaper, or can it be weekly electronic newspaper?
I believe it has to be published because in order to have circulation, that, that requires it to be distributed as opposed to people going to their website. They're not, they're not circulating it when it's on their website.
Okay, so that did not change by the last legislature, I know it was discussed.
Yes, it was, it's discussed in almost everybody's.
And it didn't pass, okay.
Twenty-two percent of people made over eighty that are living in the country right now, I didn't understand whether that was.
Okay.
But, but that's, that's not six, that's not section five point oh one.
No, it's not, that's three oh six, I just, it wasn't addressed, so I wanted to, I wanted to ask that because it wasn't addressed in the propositions at all.
We did discuss that for two months, and what we determined was due to the Texas state law, we were not able to change that, we attempted to, but unfortunately, we didn't find the law accepting of us to change it, to pull out of public publication, circulation, and print.
Okay, good, thank you. So Proposition D is five oh one. So, proposition D is five one. And five oh one is elections regular and special. So, the five oh one is talking about all city elections shall be conducted and publicized in accordance with the Texas Election Code added to section five oh one. The regular city election shall be held on uniform election dates by the Texas Election Code. It would be taking out the second Saturday.
Because it's no longer on the second Saturday.
So, it's by the Texas Election Code?
Correct. Well, and right now, it's first Saturday, but we didn't want to put first Saturday, because they could go back to the second Saturday, or they could go to the fourth Saturday.
They want it broad, so.
Or they could choose, you know, Tuesdays at dusk.
Okay. And E was the change on section five oh one on E was all municipal elections shall be publicized with the Texas Election Code, and that would be taken out.
Right, we just combined D with the language of A.
Okay.
Therefore, D was redundant at that point.
Okay. Any other questions on that one? The next one is section five oh three, filing for office. Which is proposition E. Any qualified citizen as defined by Article six oh three of this charter may file for election to the office of mayor or council member. Assigned application and prescribed oath shall be filed with the city secretary in accordance with the Texas Election Code and any other forms as required by the city and the state would be added. Does that part of this Texas state law change also?
No, it was a suggestion from the city secretary's office, because I believe they require some additional, the city requires additional forms, not required by state.
Okay.
I would like to see something, and I'm not sure if this is the exact location that we need to put it or not, but I have, I, I, I have a very, very strong feeling that there should be something in our charter that disallows a husband and wife who, two brothers, two fathers, whatever the case may be, where they're related to run at the exact same time. And here's why. If you have a husband and a wife, and they both win, and they both get elected, all they have to do is speak to one other council member, and you have a walking quorum.
I understand, I understand, Councilman Townsend, but I would have to check. My, my strong suspicion is that that is not constitutional. To not allow an individual to run for office, one or the other, I don't know which one, and I don't know how you pick which one, or the first one to file, I, you know, I, I, I really, and I have, I don't have, I can't figure this out, you know, I can't cite a case off the top of my head, but I would be really surprised if that was constitutional.
Well, then, how do you get around what we have to do by legislation on open meetings, requests, and acts? And how do you stop people from communicating, say, I had my brother, or say, yeah, my brother was running, he was elected, he and I talk about something, he goes and talks to one other person, or we become friends with one other person, and now we're running the entire city council. How, how is that good, Lauren?
Well, for, for one, it takes, it takes four to constitute a quorum, which may be the mayor, so it wouldn't be just one other. Under, under your charter, it takes four.
Okay.
And, and that would just be something that I'd have to be careful about, you know?
Wow.
Well, hopefully, we can tighten that up when we get to it. I have a lot of notes on that and a lot of discussion on that, in that that was not clear, and I understand what it's saying in the charter, but we can also add to the charter to make sure that what a quorum is, is really understood. There's only five, there's six eligible voters, but there's only five voters that can ever vote, and I vote in the, if there's a tie, and then three is a quorum. But four is a quorum in order to transact business, and that's what it says, but we're, we're getting to that sections.
We'll get to that.
We're getting, we're getting that section.
With those individuals, whether husband, wife, or whatever, that it should be held to the same standard as any standing member of the council.
Absolutely, they would be. But I don't, I, again, I can do the research if you want me to, but I would be, I would be stunned.
I would think.
If that's constitutional.
Yeah.
I would think it would be unconstitutional, because you're removing one per, one of those persons' lives.
Right. That's my concern.
And, and.
But, but you're right, John, they would have to be held in same standard, same standard.
But again, I think it should be left up to the citizens when they vote, who they want. Yeah, that's the other thing, restricting the citizens' rights.
It would be a sticky wicket for the husband and wife or two brothers, because they would have to really watch the Ps and Qs.
Are you going to get that from Texas?
Yes.
Well, there's also, let's see, conflicts of interest. And I know that we hold, there is one paragraph in here that we hold others to conflict of interest, but council was taking out of that, so, but we'll, we'll get to that, so. Any other discussions on the filing for office of five oh three? The next one is proposition F, which is amending section six oh eight and section seven oh one. It's taking out of six oh eight that the mayor shall see that all ordinance bylaws and resolutions of the council are faithfully obeyed and enforced. And I noticed in a future one, that is put into the duties of the general manager of the city. So, is that why that was taken out?
Yes.
What was the premise of that?
Yes, because that we, the, the Charter of the Commission believes that that was really more part of the duties of the city, you know, city manager than, than the mayor.
Okay. All right, and the mayor shall, when authorized by council, sign all official documents such as ordinances, resolutions, conveyances, grant easements, official plans, contracts, and bonds.
The reason that was removed is that the commission didn't think, or suggested to be removed, is the consent. The commission didn't think they needed examples, just we could stop it, sign all official documents.
Okay, so the general manager or?
No, we're not, we're not adding that to the senior manager. We're just removing it from the mayor, because the commission didn't think examples were needed, such as.
Okay, so who signs it?
You do. It's just not, that's just not.
We removed the run-on part of the sentence at the end. The mayor still signs official documents, period. We didn't need to give the different types of documents to be signed, because it was redundant.
Okay, so.
That doesn't mean you can't sign them. You'll still be required to sign them. They're just not listed in the charter.
But we don't need to narrow or define what is the definition of official documents?
No.
Okay. Is there would be, would there be any questions? Wondering what is an official document that would come up that I hadn't, that mayor hadn't signed before?
No, because in, in this case, then, any conveyances of, like, property, the mayor has to sign ordinances or laws, has to sign.
Okay.
But that, that's pretty clear on, on the authorities on those individual documents.
Okay, but the mayor does not need official documents, does not count HR documents, does not, or does not doubt any of the things that is normally the duty of city manager or HR. So, it cannot be construed. Official documents, we don't need to define that.
No, I don't think so.
Okay, because that's the difference. It's defining it or not defining it, because there's lots of official documents.
They can leave that language in.
I just don't want any misunderstanding as to what's an official document.
Well, official document would probably anything on which councils taken action.
Okay.
Correct. For example, when we bring a contract to council consideration, you're authorizing the city manager to execute. So, it's defined about who's authorized to, to sign.
Okay.
Is the staff confused by this?
No.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So, the next one, I think, was for that we're doing at six oh eight, was the definitely the gender. You shall perform, remember, picking out gender, and the mayor, Potem, shall retain member voting privileges and absence of the mayor, so it was just gender, changing the gender words, so the rest of six oh eight, correct?
No.
That was probably, well, that was, that's alluded to on the one at the end.
At the end, yeah. So, this, this one is just basically just moving the, the duties of, of being sure that all ordinances, bylaws, resolutions are faithfully obeyed and enforced, moving that to the responsibility of the city minister.
All right, and in six oh seven, I didn't see this addressed, but conflict of interest in city contracts. It talks about that no officer or employee of the city shall have a financial interest, direct or indirect, in any contract with the city, and shall be financially interested directly or indirectly in the sale of the city land. It does not say elected officials. That there should not be a conflict for elected officials, it's in six oh seven.
I don't have that.
It wasn't addressed at all.
What, what is the language that is?
Yeah. That it talks about officer or employee of the city.
City council members are officers.
Officers.
So, I know that it had talked about that before, the mayor and council prohibited, and it had been nepotism, I mean, it had been very specific with elected, but that was taken out of there. And it's in, it's in six oh six and six oh five. So, for clarification, I know Councilman Townsend, would what do you think about the clarification that council, do we need to put council in there, or just know that council is an officer?
Council's not six oh five either. That said, council members are o, are officers.
Yeah.
We're the board, we're the board of directors, so I think we're already included. We are officers.
And it's specific at six oh six to the mayor and city council members. And again, we addressed council members to councilmen earlier or later, I can't remember which. But that's specifically defined from holding dual office, that's dual life offices.
Right, and so.
So, that wouldn't be the same language used in, in six oh five and six oh seven, because that's nepotism and conflicts of interest.
So, city council cannot own land that they're selling to the city?
Correct.
Okay, and that is clear in six oh seven by just saying the word officers?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. I didn't know if we needed to find that. You know, in any document, you want to be able to do it where it is irrefutable as to what it means.
There is a very specific definition in case law of what constitutes a municipal officer, and, and it clearly includes, probably starts with city council.
Is that part of our charter, the definition in that case law?
Defined by, is, by state law.
By state law, okay. All right. Any questions on that? Yes.
Yes. Um, they will argue this concerning gender and have removed everything you could to make it a fact, or just not there when necessary. This particular section has gender reference three or three times.
Yeah, we, we deal with that later.
Oh, I think that's, that's item Q, I think, where it's kind of a sweep.
It, it's the reason that, and there's some repetition in here, because we're required to do this by only one subject per proposition. And since we were redefining the city managers or adding to the city manager's duties, I considered that to be a different subject than changing the names of city manager. That's all dealt with in, when we changed the, and we referred, take pronouns out, move, and add the job titles. That's all done for all of them. City manager, assistant city manager, finance director, director of public works, police chief, fire chief, that's all done, fire marshal, it's all done in one, in one proposition, because that's all one subject.
And I, I was really, uh, mayor and mayor first. On section six point eight, which I also sent you, you should city manager had another question. Because I had notes here, and I will admit, this was a meeting that I missed, that says the mayor shall appoint special committees as the city manager deems advisable. Is that under the city manager duties? I was.
I backed that up, I was looking.
On, on the section six point oh eight, mayor and mayor first term, about coming to the sentence before the last sentence of that section, the mayor shall appoint special committees as I had a note in my my notes here that say the committees, the mayor shall appoint special committees as the city manager advises. Did I, there's something there again, that is a meeting that I listened to, I did not.
I don't have that, I think it should be the mayor shall appoint special committees as the mayor deems advisable.
Subject to approval by council.
Right, or is instructed by council.
Or as instructed by the council.
No. About six point oh eight.
Yeah, the mayor shall perform such duties consistent with the charter, or is maybe imposed upon him by council. So.
That's the mayor. I just wanted to make sure we weren't missing something.
No, it's a good question.
Did you get the cloud?
No, no, that's what this is for. I mean, that's what this is for.
There are notes all over here.
This is an important document. The mayor shall appoint special committees as they deem advisable, subject to approval by council, or as instructed by council. So, there she checks and balances. The mayor can bring them up, council can say nay, council can bring them up. And then take the vote. Okay?
So, question about six oh five nepotism. Does this at all answer his question earlier about husband, wife being elected?
How often?
A way to stop that?
Offer the city or officer of any city board shall appoint or vote for or confirm the appointment to any office, position, clerkship, employment of any person related with a second degree of affinity. So, by marriage, or within, or by blood?
That talks about a council appointments. And, and, and city council members are elected by the, by the citizens.
It talks about officer of the city and officer of the city board and office position, clerkship, so if you are on city council, you can't appoint your wife to work for the city.
Correct.
So, but I don't think it says anything about elected, a husband or wife wanted to run.
No.
And I believe the difference in that is because one is elected by people.
Correct.
And the other one is all appointed by.
Right.
And it's actually captured within the ethics commission of Texas in their law. They reference Bainbridge Island, Washington, who had an issue with this side of tort sort of thing, but ultimately, what they decided was that by the vote of the people, people can be added to an office no matter what, and it's up to the people to decide against or for that.
Okay. Providing that any person who has been continuously employed for six months prior to the election, or thirty days prior to the appointment of the officer, may be retained in such employment. So, to answer your question, it, it doesn't, it doesn't relate to Councilman Townsend's point, correct?
Correct.
Good call, though. Have to read these things three or four times, so many whereas, hereas. Okay. Holding dual offices, no dual offices, violation of section is malfeasance. Okay. That was proposition E. We go to seven oh one of that. That's any removals. City manager. And proposition F, it talks about the changes to the city manager portion of it.
Yeah, we just, we just covered that.
Okay.
Or proposition G.
Okay. So, proposition G is talking about back in section six point one oh, appointments and removals. Where neither the council nor any of its members shall instruct or request the city manager or any of the city manager subordinate department's heads to appoint or remove from office or employment, any person except with respect to the offices which are to be filled with council approval or appointment under the provisions of the charter. I'll have to explain, council approves who? I'll have to explain, um council approves who and the city manager appoints?
We, we, we get to that a little bit later, but the city manager appoints with council approval, certain positions. It's like the assistant city manager, for instance, on tonight's uh agenda, we've got the IT director.
Right.
Uh director of public works, director of community development. I'm sure I'm gonna run out of them, but police chief, uh fire chief, uh fire marshal is actually appointed by the fire chief. And finance director, I'm sure there's.
Right.
Yeah, it's, then basically the department heads. The rea- the reason that this clarification is here is that it originally, it, 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 it said here essentially uh city council can't uh can't tell the part, can't tell employees what to do. They've got to stay out of the, basically stay out of city manager business, city manager does that. With the exception of later in the charter, there were places where it required those ten uh uh employees to be appointed by the city manager with council approval. And so we wanted to clarify that, yeah, that, that, that council still has to, you know, knock metal in the, uh, the day to day affairs of the city. But uh and that's the city manager's job, but with, with the exception of the approval uh of appointment or appointment under of those ten specific department heads. We just wanted to make that clear, because it was, to me, it seemed a little contradictory when you, you said you can't meddle with the city and then later on it said, in each one of those specific places, it said uh that the city manager shall appoint with council approval. So we were just trying to, to clarify that.
Well, when you read that, it says the council, or any members, just nouns and verbs, shall instruct or request or any city that they don't get in, involved in that, except when, with respect to if council has approved those positions, so it seems like it gives council the right.
No, the very first word says neither.
Neither the council nor its members shall instruct or request. And then it comes down, which are to be filled except with ones that they have approved. And so taking out the words council approval, um if we approve it, it sounds like we're having the right then to change it, and we shouldn't.
To change what?
To take away uh ten people on there and council has approved that, so it says except with respect to the offices who charge to be filled with council approval, that we cannot do anything about it except if we have approved it.
Except with regard to the appointment with council approval.
Okay, and we approve every appointment that, I mean, we approve the people that, that are city manager.
There's ten of them, yeah.
Right, so.
That's the.
Re-read to make sure that it's isn't giving us back the right. Have that right.
It's only the ten appointed positions that.
And we should not have the right to remove them.
Well, the, the, the appointment or removal.
Once we say yes or no.
It's, it's, it's made by, the recommendation's made by the city manager, but subject to council approval.
Okay.
And then we're going to retain that.
I think it clarifies it further down in the charter, because it said in the provisions under this charter, so it specifies those positions that.
Right, we get to that a little bit later.
Okay, because it does sound like, you know, we neither council or members shall instruct or request the manager.
Right.
Except if it's people we approve, and that's how it reads. And so if it's people we approved, then we can instruct the manager. And that is not what we want to do um once they're approved. We shouldn't have the right to say, we want you, we're gonna remove IT. And I just wanted to make sure that that, because the wording is, when you look just the nouns and verbs, that's what it.
The council has to approve the appointment.
And we would have the right to remove them, no. We wouldn't have to, we shouldn't have the right to remove them.
No, it's to request the city manager or any of those.
Okay, well, if you would.
You can't do that.
Read that, that, uh we're all agreement, that, yeah, we shouldn't be able to do that, but I don't want that to be uh read that we can't do that unless it's someone we approved, so, and we approve all the recommendations. So.
No pressure, get up. Um, I can see where it looks redundant, absolutely. Um I think what this is trying to say is, when we have secondary employees who fall in line behind the department head, those people should not be meddled with by the council. Whereas that's the manager's job and the department head's job, when you get to those ten department heads who are approved by the council, those are specifically addressed in section seven, with their roles, their approvals, their removals and such. And so I think if we try to say that six one zero is the beginning and ending, I believe we're shortchanging what this charter does in section seven. So I believe if we're going to discuss six one zero, we should move ahead to section seven and see how the agreement looks or doesn't look.
Okay. As we.
That just immediately skips over uh another section.
Well, we'll go back to that.
I do have a question to the city attorney, of the word instruct legally in the case of the council and the city manager, um what's the definition there? If, if the council theoretically were to instruct the city manager to um I don't know, discipline or even
The, the.
terminate a department head, how strong is this word instruct?
Uh instruct is really to, to designate day to day duties of, of, you know, of one of the employees, particularly a subordinate, like like a city council member can't come into, uh or can't go down, you know, see a public works employee out uh doing one of his jobs and say, hey, you need to go down to my place and, and uh you need to unclog the drainage ditch in front of my house, that's not how that works, and that's what it's designed to be. Does that make sense?
That would be an abuse of power.
They, yeah, they could tell David, but, but, you know.
That'd be an abuse of power from a council. Yeah.
What is the punishment for that?
Removal.
You just said, somebody is. The city council would, it would have, uh, city council would have to enter into investigation about it, and if the one, if they wanted to, they could censure the uh, the, that city council member. It's a slap on the hand.
Was, there was, there's three reasons you're gonna leave. Abuse of power by elected official is a reason to remove an elected official requirement in the state. This is.
You have to go through.
Yeah.
Serious due process.
Yeah.
Figure out that's happening. It's difficult to enforce.
Yeah. Just avoided it on call. Okay.
You're gonna have some clean ditches, right?
Okay, but so can we get back to this second seven oh one that goes along with this?
So let's.
Question?
The seven oh one.
There it is, it's on page seventy nine.
Yeah, seven oh one.
I believe.
It's on page eighty. Um and it talks about the city manager qualifications, there's not really anything that.
That's not there.
There is.
Go back. It may not be, it's, it's in the charter, but it's not, it may not be anything that will mess the way.
But there.
Um, seven oh one.
See.
So do Brock, do you have that seven oh one?
It must be uh in, in the charter.
Well, there, there may not be, and you need to change.
We're, we may not be amending it, that's why.
Right.
Going back up to check, see where it is in the charter. Actually, it is article seven, as Brock mentioned, I do know that.
Is it seven oh one C?
Seven one C one.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
There's a seven oh one C.
One.
Six is what was changed on twenty, but that has not that.
Ma- mayor, that section doesn't need to be changed, it, it addresses what they're trying to accomplish.
Okay.
It's in each one of the, the seven oh one defines the duties of city manager. One in terms, uh, uh, appointment qualification, term and salary, and then duties of city manager, and then uh seven oh two defines assistant city manager, and it says the city manager with the approval of council may appoint an assistant city manager. And then it says that uh the police department is, uh, police chief is appointed by, well, let's see. He is appointed by the city manager with the approval of city council, and that's in seven point oh three. Seven point oh point, seven point oh four says city manager with the approval of city council shall appoint a city secretary. Seven oh five is the same thing for the finance director, seven oh six is the same thing uh for the fire, uh, for the fire chief, seven oh six A is fire chief. Department of Public Works is seventy point one zero, the Department of Community Development is seven point one one. So that's where those all are, and those all say, they're not, I don't believe they're being changed, but they all say uh the subject to be, uh, they're, they're, they're appointed by the city manager, subject to council's approval. That's where those are, is that what you're thinking of, Brock?
Yeah, I, when we discussed it, one thing that I remembered talking about was the council should not be worried about secondary and third level and tertiary employees.
Right.
Only the ten department heads should be addressed, which were each defined specifically as, as approved by the council.
Right.
And what we discussed back and forth was, then who has the ultimate say on the secondary to tertiary level employees? And we decided that that truly is the manager's job, hence the title. And the, and the only reason to have council get involved is if they see egregious by a department head that then comes back with the city manager.
Oh yeah, and then, then that's really an issue with the city manager. His appointment, because he's not doing his job, taking care of his.
Exactly, so that, that was the thought process, if it is too, or some are too wordy. Completely understand that, we just tried to cover our bases, saying there is an exception, they will be defined later.
Other elsewhere, we didn't want to have the provision that said you can't uh do anything with regard to anybody other than the city manager, when elsewhere in the, the charter, it said that it's the city manager's appointment, subject to approval by the city council. Because it, it, to me, I read those as, as particularly in conflict.
Okay.
So that's what we're trying to clean up in, and now we've got what, the what number that is, but in the in, in that, uh, what is it, G? And proposition G.
Okay, and that's six one three rules of procedure, the definition of a quorum, that was not addressed. I understand in six point one three rules of procedure, vote and accept on procedural motions by roll call, nays, absentees, recorded in minutes. The council wants to state the reason for the abstaining, four council members, one of whom may be the mayor, shall constitute a quorum for the purpose of transaction of business, and no action of the council shall be valid or binding unless adopted by an affirmative vote of three or more members of council. And there's five voters at all times, hopefully, you know, five, which means three is a quorum. And what, we wanted to make sure that this could not be construed in violation of Public Information Act. That three is a quorum that you can't. Okay, well, and the um, that, you can't have three people get together and discuss things, that's a violation, where does that say that?
It's, that's not a violation of the, having three people get together at, at the current time is not a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
Well, whatever it's a violation of the state code.
The, this, it's not a violation.
So five voters, five eligible voters and, and three people can get together and talk about uh and decide on the votes when there's only five.
What the Open Meetings Act says is that
Well. Yeah.
Can't have a quorum of the city council get together, and in such, in section six point one three, you define a quorum to be four council members, one of whom may be the mayor.
But there's only five voters ever, five, there's six eligible voters, there's only five people can vote.
Correct.
So how a, a quorum is if you have three on the vote, getting, that people can get together afterwards and talk about what's on the agenda and come already having the votes. That is not clear, and that has caused problems.
Quorum according to your charter, you define, the charter defines a quorum as four.
So we.
It is, it's, but you can change that.
Okay.
But the quorum i- is defined by the charter as four.
Okay, how many people, I just want to be really clear, how many people? How many of elected officials have to be here to have a meeting, three or four?
Uh you have to have four.
Okay, have to have four people, so if you have four, and that includes the mayor, since if somebody's not here, that means I vote, but I usually only vote unless there's a tie.
Includes the mayor, whether there's, whether, yeah, whether somebody's not here or not, it can include the mayor.
So what, so if there's five eligible voters, four since four is a quorum, that means that it, not that, I'm not calling anybody out or anything, but if we have an agenda and three people can get together and talk about it before the meeting, that's perfectly approved in our charter.
Your charter, let me, let me state, your charter states that a quorum is for members of council members, one of whom may be the mayor. The uh Open Meetings Act says that you cannot uh you've got to have a quorum in order to discuss things, so uh there could be the argument made, although I don't think it's a good one, that you could meet it, you can have three people discuss. However, the meetings act also says that it's a violation of the act to meet in numbers less than a quorum in an attempt to contravene the meetings act. And I would suggest to you that meeting in threes, discussing things, three people discussing before the meeting, is meeting in numbers less than a quorum in an attempt to contravene the, the open meetings act. So, I don't know, still think it's legal, but I, I, I think what you may be thinking is that general municipalities don't have charters. But they, and, and they are by definition have five members, including, uh, excuse me, five council members, and the mayor does not vote. It takes three, three is a quorum by state law definition. That's not the case in Tom Ball, because Tom Ball is not a general municipality, it's a home municipality, and it's been defined as four, you can change this. But it's been defined as four council members, one of whom may be.
Well, I just want to make it clear, and it's, it's not real clear. Because then, you know, people, you have five voters, three seem to be, you have six eligible voters. So.
That, that could be changed.
Can we just make it clear that there are six eligible voters, counting the mayor, but there's never ever any more than five votes, ever.
That's true.
And so a quorum is three, not four.
You can change that to three, not four, if the council wants to do that.
But that, isn't this, this addressing, this isn't addressing forums, this is addressing how many affirmative votes something needs to have.
It's actually addressing.
Says constitute a quorum, that's what it says.
But the.
It says.
For council.
Vote of three or more.
Uh for council members, one of whom is a mayor, shall constitute a quorum.
Yeah, we went back and forth two times, so quorum, you have to have four of the six, which is two thirds rule. But then to have an approval of something, all three of those councilmen or women must approve.
Three or more.
The mayor can approve or disprove, but all three of the council members must approve, that's what the three is.
So not, not necessarily, three or more members of the council, and the mayor is a member of the council.
Oh, so it is.
So if you've got, you have, let's say you've got four, you've got three council members and, and, and the mayor. Uh.
You have to have three.
It has to be all three councilmen.
Yeah.
It's meant to be clear, so there's undeniable what the rules are, and that's what I, that's the question.
Clear as it's stated.
Well, there's, there's two answers to that question, one, one is based on this, it takes a, four council members to, to make a quorum. But the Texas Open Meetings Act says that meeting in numbers less than a quorum in an attempt to contravene the act is a violation of the open meetings.
So why can't we?
So I don't think there's. So I don't think there's a hard and fast number that you could say, yeah, we could get three people together. I think that's risky.
Well, you told me that, you know, walking outside.
Yeah.
When we were talking, just walking up to the company, we said, nobody else better walk up, because then you got a walking quorum.
Right.
And that's three.
Well.
That's what you've told me, that's where I'm confused.
Here's, here's the deal. It's four, okay? Most of the time, and I work for lots of different cities. Most of the time it's three, that's typically the way it is, but your charter is defined it as four. But. It, it's, to me, it's risky in talking about it. I would say more than to, to one other person. Because then you're dealing with numbers less than a quorum, and you're, and you're purposely trying to get around the, the Open Meetings Act. Which we, which requires that all things be discussed at an open meeting that's been. Been, for which a notice has been published.
Well, um.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
In light of.
It's, you know, technically not a quorum until you got four, according to your charter.
Um, in light of this then. Uh, is it possible to go ahead and make it? Clear? Instead of, since the mayor is part of it?
And by, by the Open Meeting Act, it's part of. What all of you do.
Right.
All of us do.
Mayor, I think. If the city council wants to, when they send this to, to be voted on, and that's not an action I'm, you know.
No, it's discussion now.
It's discussion, but if the city council wants to change it to three. City council can do that.
Okay, so that is. Um, and the. Procedures on how that would be is just that when we have our meeting on the fifth. If there is something that, if council wants to vote the wording down, they have to vote the wording down, or do we give?
As a practical matter, can't take any action on it, official action on it today, but if there is a consensus of council. I can bring back language that, that addresses that. I, I can add it to this, uh, to this ordinance. Bring back language that changes the four to three.
Well, it has been.
If there is a consensus to that effect, again, can't take action on it.
Right. It has been a point of confusion in the past, because the, the two required trainings for council. Um. You know, the annual trainings, there's no, you either can do it or not do it, the only thing that they recommend on the state laws to. Publish if you all have your annual trainings or not. And so in the annual training is where we learn all those things. In the charter is if you don't have annual training, then it sounds. Like the charter allows a four, and I can see the ambiguity, that's all.
That's wild.
Right, but, but the others.
Charter defines it as four. Yeah, the difference, mayor, is this is a home rule city. And by definition, you can, there, there are home rule cities that have. Uh. Seven members of the city council. And four would be, but it would be.
Four.
Didn't, yeah, it'd be four.
Right, that's seven voters and you have four, that's a quorum, we have five voters.
Correct, but it finds, the, the seven council cities. Define what a charter or what a quorum is in their charter.
Right, at four. And I, I. I from one would like to see it just a little more clear that with five voters. Which is all we have at any time, even though there are six eligible voters, but eligible in there, there are six eligible voters. There will never be more than five voters at a time, so three constitutes four.
I mean, okay, so when I read this. I thought it would be three city council members. Would make the quorum, whether they're not to make a four, you don't have to mention four plus, you know, one of them could be the mayor. And, I mean, that's how I read it, and I, I didn't understand why, why it was four and saying, well, one could be the mayor. Cause I mean. The mayor wouldn't be voting if the mayor makes the four.
Right, and the mayor only votes if there is to break a tie.
Right.
So that means there is a.
Has to be four.
Councilman absent, and there's the tie, and then I vote.
And we vote two to two.
Right, if there's only three council members here. Then we cannot have the meeting, because this says you have to have four, or do I count as the fourth? But then it says other places, I can't vote unless there's a tie. So if it's three, four, I can't vote then, so.
What they're saying is.
How confusing that could get.
What, what it says is that you can't have a city council meeting with just three council members here.
Mm-hmm.
You have to have four constitute a, a quorum, one of which may be you. If they have four, and you make, the mayor makes up the quorum. Then, then any vote, uh, affirmative vote to transact bu- business has to be unanimous by the three city council members that are here. But what they're saying is that you can't, you need four in order to, to have a quorum.
So that's what it says now, four, but what if it said three city council members and just doesn't mention the mayor, you still got the same three city council members coming to vote.
You got the vote requirement.
But if they, but if they vote two, one. It just fails.
Yeah.
It, it's addressing something totally different, it's just addressing.
Mayor is there to make up the fourth or not, you have the same three people voting.
Correct.
Correct, but if there was just one person gone, there was two, two, the mayor can vote. And break that tie.
I think the idea is that if you have. Uh, if, if you can have a quorum with just three, then half of your council members are gone. Half, half of the council is, is gone. Because the mayor, the mayor is a, a member of the council.
Correct. And the way I read this is, if you've got four as a quorum. Then. To pass anything. Three votes have to be to the affirmative that could include the mayor.
No, like.
If you only have.
No, no.
Not the case.
If you've got three council members, it says three, right, photo of three or more members in the council. But she only votes in the case of tie.
Right.
So if you've got four people here and she makes up the, the quorum, then you've got three council members, you're never gonna have a tie.
Well, Lauren.
But if it's one, one, and one, one of them abstains, it doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay.
Based on the discussion you have just, can we all come to an agreement, it. It is not clear? And can you come back with wording that will help to have everyone on the same understanding as to what this deals with, what is a quorum? So. Can you come back with that?
Do we have a consensus of council?
Cause as you can see, we've got a lot of confusions and discussions, and since this is our charter, just make it clear.
I don't mind rewording it as long as it stays.
Stays four and three.
Yes.
That's why, I can make it, uh, I, I could see what I can do on that. I mean, can you put examples? In this, because I know we've had meetings where the mayor has been absent. The mayor pro tem has been absent, but we've had at least four council members. Where then we as council have elected one of us to be the acting mayor of that. They're, well, not to be the acting mayor, to preside over the.
Presiding, preside.
We've done that as well. So, I mean, I under. I understand what we're saying here, but I'm not against reciting examples to make it more clear. I, I understand what we're saying, we're just saying that we need three council members. Or, or four council members, one may be the mayor, if the mayor's not here, one may be the mayor pro tem, which is still a council member. But then the mayor only count, or only votes when there is a tie.
Correct.
Well, and, and the forum would be.
Horns.
We're down to one.
Yes. That's great.
Cause charter says, basically, that, uh, they don't want two council members to be able to carry a vote.
Correct. And we also make, want to make it clear with state law too. State law is a three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
State law is not a three, uh, for, for the city of Tom Ball, state law is not a three.
Well, they talk about quorum under, under our. And our. Oh, go ahead, no, go ahead, I'm sorry.
If you have the form where the fourth makes up the mayor. And you have a vote, and it's two to one. Because two council members are out. Aren't you still having two council members voting on the?
No, you have to have three vote, three vote, yes.
If it's two to one vote.
It doesn't.
She doesn't vote.
Lauren, do you think it may be easier if we just give, um, two or three subsets in here, like an A, B, C, to give clear definition of this is a quorum? This is how many affirmative votes must be in order for something to pass? And then, just kind of break it up towards one paragraph.
I'll try to break it up, I'll try to break it up and make it in separate sentences, so that looks like it, yeah, I've got that.
And, that, council, no one can get, no elected official can get together under a four and talk about things before coming in, but that's. You were talking about, that's fine, like, if you could just, that's a great idea, giving examples that where there's. Everybody understands. And it's not just as now we've been through it, but this charter is going to people who have not been through it. And if you read this, there is a lot of ambiguity that, that people could think about.
That you break it out.
So that would be good.
It's gonna say the exact same thing.
Many of this feeling is really clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, but, but.
But it is, it is long, it is.
It will, I could break it up, but yeah, that, you're right.
Examples as Mark suggested, some.
I mean, what, what are you thinking?
Well. Whatever he comes up with and what we just talked about. So, okay, so.
Inquiry to the chair. Yeah, are we gonna proceed with this meeting since it's after six, or are we gonna adjourn to the regular council?
Yes, well, the first, um, item is continue. Through, um, the prayer and the. Pledges. Uh, but there is the item on the, the city council meeting to continue this.
Right, right, if you choose. But it's only under the city council, it wouldn't be with the, the Charter Review Commission.
Oh, true.
So it's.
Helpful to have him here.
It's up to you all, whether you want to keep going or wanna adjourn this and.
But I don't want to do any kind of that, man.
Yeah, thank you to be here, uh, do we have any general public that has come just for the? City council meeting? Oh, they're in the lobby?
Some of them are in the lobby, yes.
Okay. Um. So we would adjourn for council, and then we'd start again, we would request, can we request that they stay? And have input without having to have a three minute?
Can we, can we, the workshop? We, yeah, we can, we can, uh, uh.
And you'll stay?
Recede the joint meeting right now. Have the city council meeting, and come back and, and to, uh, uh, and, and. Reconvene this meeting, and continue it after the city council meeting, if you want to do it.
After the city council, a whole meeting, or just the pledges and the prayer?
You could, you could do it however you want to do it.
What, where's the agenda?
You can, you can reconvene it at a part of the regular city council meeting.
As first item?
I mean, my, my.
I don't want to leave, leave them here.
It's gonna do that, just continue the, this meeting, the, of the two bodies together rather than.
And then just city council like?
Right, the other option would be, uh, the only reason you want to, uh, recess this meeting. Would be in, 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 uh, how orders of regular city council meetings would be if you want to take care of the regular city council business before you come back. And, and talk like this, but that would require these, uh, however many, eleven to eight people, all people to, to stay. And I would ask that they not discuss city business while they're here and not part of the, the city council meeting, totally correct. Again, that's your call, but if, if you're just gonna go right back into a. Uh, 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 the joint meeting, I don't know why you would want to reset, or, or adjourn this for, excuse me.
The discussion with us before you start city council, and we haven't even talked about term limits yet, but I know it's going to be.
Okay.
Quite the discussion, I think you're gonna start city council incredibly late, which is possibly.
Which, which, which means people that are here for other items. Sit wait, somebody's gonna have to sit wait, it's either gonna be.
Can we?
It's either we charter review commission, or it's, or it's gonna be that.
Why, why don't we, why don't we do it? You've got people who've come into town to attend a regular, um, council meeting. Why don't we hold another special? Uh, meeting between with the both parties here, the, the review board and council. At a later date, and let's go ahead and take care of. Business that needed to be taken care of and was canceled due to the weather.
Yeah, we are under a time constraint that we have to do the first vote February fifth.
Correct.
And so, we have to have the first vote, first reading and vote February fifth, the second one, February twelfth. So we will be having a special council meeting on the twelfth, because it has to be done by the fifteenth, sixteenth in order to get it on the ballot. So that means that, uh, we have to call, um. I'm fine with con- um, continuing this or going ahead and just having the pledges and the prayers and the presentations. And then make this the first item on the city council agenda.
What time is the meeting on the twelfth going to be, because I believe that there is a planning, zoning commission meeting that day.
Would, would it be possible just to have a special meeting sometime?
This week?
No, some, sometime between now and the end of January. Just for this.
Yeah, I would propose Thursday, yes.
Okay. We need three days to post.
What if instead of stops, stopping the meeting, adjourn the meeting, we continue the meeting? I mean. We, we've done that before.
And that's fine with me.
It's get light at night, and we just.
Yes.
Yes. Um, there, that would be okay with me too, we need to let the.
Look at that, mention, uh.
People.
Recess and write the meetings.
Yeah. I, I think it's got the. I think that accepts only when it's late, but let me look this up real quick.
Um, proposition.
Give me, give me just a sec, what's that? I, I don't know, that's what I want, trying to look up right now.
Uh, in the meantime, can we go, we go on with proposition H, I think that. Um, Lauren, if you would bring back some wording that can be discussed.
Yes.
For, for six point one oh, and proposition H. Is amended the ordinance, um, by removing the requirement for it to be published in a book or pamphlet form. And removing the requirement that the first reading of an ornament, ordinance must be read and it's entirely unless a motion is made. And passed suspending the requirement. Any discussions on section six point one four? It's taking out at the first, basically the required readings. That we always have to vote for a.
One four.
One four, six one four, that we have to, um. Vote for reading by caption only, this is removing that, correct?
Correct.
Removing the requirement of reading by caption only. On these ordinances. Any discussion on that? Okay. Okay. All right, then, uh, let's go on, I'm just going always looking these things, if that's okay. Um, the next item is proposition H I. Which is council member be appointed as a liaison to each board of commission, this is a new section of our charter. That it is a requirement as to what we have already. Done this year, is that a councilman be appointed as a liaison to each board and commission. Uh, and remove section ten point oh one paragraph E, that the city manager shall serve as the liaison between the commission and the council. So instead of having the city management require that goes to all P and Z, T E D C. Um. Board of adjustments, uh, such that, uh, mayor points, our council approves and mayor points liaisons as we have done. And that that becomes a part of our charter. That program. Discussion on any of that?
Uh, government body that recesses an open meeting to the following regular business day, needing that post notice of the continued meeting.
But we can meet tomorrow night? E D C meets at five thirty.
Well, I can see if I can get somebody to cover my other meeting tomorrow night, but.
Oh, um, okay, E D C meets.
You can only, uh, post, uh, uh. Postpone it or recess it, you know, the next. Regular business day, unless you wanna. Unless you want to declare holidays. In the next, you know, official season holidays.
Um.
Next Monday, you can, I mean, you got time to post it next Monday.
That's a good idea, declare tomorrow's a city holiday.
Play the rest of the week's city holiday. Play the rest of the week sitting all day.
It's ice cream day, so. So that would be uh after E D C, is Jelzween gonna go past seven? You know?
That tomorrow?
Yeah.
E D C got canceled because of the freeze and moved.
I've got another meeting tomorrow night, I don't know if I can get covered.
Can we do it next Monday?
I'm available next Monday, Brock's not. Tuesday?
I'm out next week, I'm in Illinois. Lucky you, yes.
You can do it by zoom.
Uh possibly, I'm I'm working on some pretty big things.
Yeah.
Oh, what's the date?
Are you available next Monday?
The twenty ninth.
Twenty ninth.
Yeah, it looks like we would have enough to have a.
So are we doing it this Friday or next Monday?
What about? We were looking, I was calling for next Monday.
Okay.
What about Friday? I'm a popular guy, if I suggest that.
It's your birthday.
I ain't gonna be here.
Can you log in by zoom and we'll sing happy birthday to you?
I can log in by zoom all Friday.
What if we make it like four in the afternoon?
He'll just have his party hat on.
Five in the afternoon? You can't do it on Friday?
I won't be back in town yet.
Have a hospital function.
Um, can you log in uh councilman?
Yeah, I can log, I mean, I can log in, like I said, but like, you know, Monday works, I will, I'll be back in town on Monday. I can be, or logged in one of the two. I'm just trying to get some property taken care of here.
I I'd like to start earlier than five o'clock.
So Monday works for most of the.
And can the others?
I'll I'll make it happen, I'll do what I can.
And that is the.
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine.
Started at four?
Is there some, there's some meeting? Is there any? Okay.
No, I don't have it.
Monday, I do not have a meeting uh for what you're saying, but Tuesday is the comprehensive plan.
Right, oh, that's what I think, you know, that's Tuesday. Okay, can we start like earlier? And so, because I really think, I was concerned an hour wasn't going to do this, there's seventeen different. Positions here to discuss, and um you know, even if we have one hour, that means it's three minutes apiece.
There's seventeen more?
No.
No, 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 no.
I was fixing to say.
There's seventeen total.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
We're on I. Um. And it goes to Q. Um, so. It's four o'clock, too early? Okay.
No.
He said five.
Yes.
Oh, we don't have a council meeting.
I could be here at whatever time.
Okay, we don't have a council, there's nothing.
You get out.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is a council meeting.
No.
Not the twenty ninth.
You don't have one artist scheduled that day.
No, but but it is. We would have council meetings on the twenty ninth, the fifth and the twelfth. February fifth, February twelfth and the twenty ninth, okay.
But the twenty ninth would only be for the charter review.
Right, it's a charter review public workshop is what we're having.
Period.
It would be.
Yes.
A a new meeting, but essentially a condition, a continuance of this.
Of the charter.
Correct.
But we will post it or relaunched it and and to view our discussion, but not, but in a separate meeting.
Yeah, charter review public workshop.
We would have to have uh an action item as well for council to give um staff and um the attorney direction on what to propose for February fifth.
Yes. Work with that.
Okay, um so we will. The the proposal is Monday, five o'clock. Um, and it'll probably go till seven or eight. Monday, um I charter review workshop, hopefully not, but you never know. So um maybe maybe we can get refreshments. So, but uh water at least, and then we will start with proposition I. And that will, so. Do I hear? Yes, do we have any other, any comments, does that work, uh Tanya with your committee? Is is there a majority that?
Make it work.
Okay. And that's not your birthday that day, or that is your birthday?
No, ma'am, my birthday is Friday.
Oh, okay. Okay, does that work with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, do I have a, I need a motion to adjourn? Oh, charter review, would you like to, Tanya?
Is your motion to adjourn? All those in favor?
Okay, so a motion to adjourn the workshop?
Motion.
Okay, all right. All those in favor?
All right.
We adjourned. Thank you guys, see you Monday.
Y'all are gonna kill this Zoom meeting, we're gonna start a new one, correct?
Yeah, they're gonna start a new one, I'm Derek, I'll send it to you.
I've got it, I think if it's the one you already sent me, I just didn't see the one for today.
Okay.
But you know, for the for for the earlier meeting, I didn't have that information, but I got the email.
Okay.
Good. They gonna take a break or what?
They're probably gonna set up for the new meeting. They break down the tables and stuff.
Okay, good enough, thanks.
Bye.
Bye.